Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 12th, 2021 Board of Selectmen meeting. We're going to start this evening by entering into executive session, and we should be able to return on time at 7:00 PM. There is a slight change. The executive session meeting minutes are still under review and draft form, so they are not ready to be approved this evening. So we'll just be addressing the other item with the Foxborough Police Union. So with that, I think we're ready for a motion and a roll call to enter executive session.
Motion to convene in executive session to conduct strategy sessions regarding collective bargaining negotiations with Foxborough Police Union, Local 379, MCOP, AFL-CIO, to reconvene in open session.
Second.
All right, and just need a roll call? If we can just go in order?
Ed O'Leary, yes.
Mark, yes.
Seth Ferguson, yes.
Leah, yes?
Stephanie, yes.
All right, great. So we'll be back in about 20 minutes to reconvene in open session. All right, welcome back, everybody. Sorry that we're a few minutes late, and then it takes us a minute to switch everything between executive session and open session. So we will resume the Tuesday, October 12th meeting. First, we have citizens input. No one's in the room for citizens input, but Christina, did anyone send anything? No? Okay. All right, and we'll do the pledge. So Chief Grace, can you lead us?
Sure.
Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, great. So we're going to go right into our first item. We have Chief Grace here for the Foxborough Police Department. We're going to do a department update review, and then we're going to approve a memorandum of understanding, and then we're going to quickly review and talk about the civil service article that's on the special town meeting warrant. We figured while he was here, we might as well review that as well at the same time.
Excellent.
All right.
Are we ready?
Steve is yours.
All right. So thank you for everybody for having me today for an operational review. I guess I'm the first department head of the year, so I will go as fast as I can within my timeline, but still covering some very important issues. This has not changed too much, our operational structure within the agency. The number, we haven't grown anywhere, so we're still running at 39 police officers. One thing I want to discuss, and these are just a couple team words, is though I'm presenting today, I'm the result of an agency and the people who work below me that demonstrate a level of professionalism that allows me to present some really great information that the residents of Foxborough should be proud of and how their police department represents themselves. These are just some key attributes to the staff. When I was sitting there thinking, I was actually going to call it the disclaimer, but I just called it my team. So, real quick, obviously, budget budget is always a topic. So we have still 39 police officers. We have the ACO. Our budget did go up $149,000 from last year, and I believe that's with two negotiated contracts. Some of that was offset because my capital outlay rolls into my budget, and we were able to get some grants so to reduce the amount of vehicles that we purchased. So even though, that still is almost a 2.8% increase. And that's nuts and bolts. That's everything within the agency minus the CIP issue. In last year, there was no CIP. Furthermore, the police department turned back money at the end of the year and did not exceed its budget. Our agency is built off the 21st century policing. This is our pillars, the six pillars. This is what we fundamentally operate, all of our policies and our operational guides. This is what we build off of. And we have taken some of these, which at one time were kind of, geez, how are we going to deal with technology? How are police agencies going to grow? And I'm going to show you how we're hitting those benchmarks. The police department is so dynamic, so busy. We do so many different things. I had to kind of narrow the scope. So what I did is I took three things: staffing, police reform mandates, and community initiatives. That's going to be the focus today of what the agency has accomplished. Obviously, staffing is always a challenge. I can't say this, this year has been astronomical. I had three police officers leave for the state police. I had another officer transfer to Western Mass. He didn't want to leave, but his wife got a job in Connecticut. They would not let her leave. And the financial, so he was commuting to Connecticut every single day. He just couldn't do it anymore. I have two officers out with serious injuries, like serious injuries. I'm not sure how it's going to work out. We hope to get them back, but it's substantial with surgeries. So we were running in the springtime with six police officers down. And what does six police officers down mean? That's an entire patrol shift. That's my entire midnight shift. So even today, I'm down two officers injured, two open spots, and two in the police academy. So one of my shifts is not showing up every single day. COVID had some benefits. We were able to modify and pull some of our staff, our school SROs, to help supplement our shift. I can't do that anymore. School is up and running. We have a year and a half of issues that are now starting to percolate. The schools are requiring us every day. We run two full school systems in Foxborough because the Foxborough Regional Charter School is K through 12 now. So we also support them as well. My midnight shift doesn't even have bare minimum. I'm one short every single day. My day shift is short one day, and my 4-12 is bare minimum, which means that every collective bargaining day off has to be filled with overtime. But what's happened is the agency has stepped up at every curve in the last year to make it work. We've never not answered our calls. We are all in compliance with making sure we do all of our follow-ups. And the offices, they're being forced a lot to work a lot of extra hours. And again, some of this is, I just can't get people here. Again, the civil service list expired in the spring. I went to the end of the list. I got to the end of the list, and there's no more lateral transfers to take throughout the Commonwealth. So the police reform, which was called the Act Relative Justice Equity and Accountability in Law Enforcement and the Commonwealth, I do want to tell everybody currently, the Foxborough Police Department is in full compliance of every single mandate. The mandates are 37 mandates at a minimum, and these are all of the items, 25 action items that we had to dig into. One of them, for example, is use of force. That may be one action item, but that is so dynamic on our training. We talk about chokeholds. We talk about shooting from motor vehicles. We have to re-modify, retrain all of our staff. Every single officer met the July 1 certification deadline for training, and we were in full compliance. And as we move through the steps, we are meeting every benchmark. I could spend three hours on this, but I just, we're there. Community initiative. I ran out of space. You see how small it's getting? So within the agency, I had to make a decision. Do I make a detective sergeant? Or do I make a community supervisor to oversee all of the needs of the community? I took that position when it was filled, and Sergeant Val Collins took that position. She's overseeing all of the school resource offices as well, and she's taken on all the community programs that happen within the community. Everything from, and you can see, National Night Out. All summer, we worked with the Boynton Library doing outdoor book reading. All of the community and programs that reach out to us, like the YMCA Faith in Blue Drive. I mean, that in and of itself, we've got every single religious group together, and we meet and we discuss trends. Obviously, safety, safety is a big thing. Two years ago, it's always a concern. We just recently teamed up with our blood drive last Friday. They couldn't believe it. We filled every single one. It ran for 12 hours, so it was fantastic. Oh, no, is that mine or?
I think that's you.
Is that me? I don't know why that's happening. I didn't do it. I'm putting it down. Now someone else is doing that. Someone's moving the most.
It's me.
Okay.
Trying to make it bigger.
Okay.
While we're waiting today, too, my son said SRO Azavito came into the Ahern Cafeteria today.
Yep.
And I guess the whole fifth grade started banging on the table cheering for him, so.
Yeah, Big Frank's impressive.
They just think he's like a rock star. It shows the community initiative that they all know who he is.
Yeah, you know, he tries to hit all the, he tries to hit the rowdy times. Middle school lunch, couldn't be any better than that, right? I don't think I can make it mine any bigger. That one's on you.
Yep.
I think that's about it, right?
Yep.
So anyway, that's our list. It's never-ending. Just to give you an idea, this is like a full-time job. It's been fantastic. Sergeant Collins also covers shift when she's not doing this. So any community group that reaches out, we have road races. She organizes them all, she follows up with them, and it's been wonderful. This is just to give you an idea, October. Here we are, we're going to hit October. These are all our initiatives that we already have planned just for October because we get into domestic violence awareness. We have offices assigned to these. We do PSAs. We information share with other agencies, state and federal, who have programs, and we get as much as we can out. We team up with the schools with bus safety coming up, and we work with their bus, school bus drivers to teach them some safety things, some things they may not be aware of. Training classes at the PD. We took this to a new level. This is just some of the classes that we hosted. When we decide to host a class and we administrate it, we actually get free training out of it for our offices. This is just the list. Obviously, this was all done in compliance with COVID, and it was fantastic. Our operations, this is Semrec, obviously. Our regional dispatch is always a work in progress. Dispatch always is. You're always fine-tuning. You're developing new systems. You work to improve. You find gaps. You find communication issues. And of course, sometimes you have systematic failures with radios, and they support us. We support them 100% as they grow. We're meeting all of our data sharing through the Department of Justice. That's been ongoing use of force. We're in compliance. That should be coming out in October. We do a follow-up on every single overdose in town. We're connected state, townwide, Norfolk County-wide, and now it's statewide. So anyone, there's an overdose anywhere that's connected to Foxborough. If it happens in Foxborough, we report it, we follow up. If a Foxborough resident overdoses in another community, we get that notification with 24 hours. We reach out to that family to do whatever we can to help them. We call it a save. We hope we can get one. If someone needs a ride, we'll drive them to Western Mass, whatever it takes. But we also have taken that initiative and developed it into a domestic violence. Sadly, in this great town we have, there is domestic violence. It's a call for service that occurs on a regular basis and involves all, every walk of life. So we follow up with every single domestic violence call. We have a workflow within the agency for a team that's been trained, and they go out and they meet with the victims and the kids to see what we can offer and keep them safe. We do safety plans where I'm finalizing an updated operational safety plan for the high school, which hadn't been kind of touched in a couple of years. I'll go faster. I can tell, Leah, you're giving me the look. I better go, right?
No, you got till 7:40. We got till 7:45.
Again.
In 20 minutes.
Again, our commitment.
Don't worry.
To the kids in this town is one of my priorities. So even with the shortages of allocated two SROs and a supervisor to make sure we don't have gaps, and they're going all the time. It's unbelievable how much work they're doing. But what they're also doing is they're familiar with all the staff. They're familiar with the deans over at Foxborough Charter School because a lot of incidents don't happen Monday through Friday, 7 to 3. They happen after hours. They, you know, and our SROs are also the juvenile court officers, so we work with diversion and all those guidelines to make sure that we educate kids, we save kids, and kind of help them out when we can. They share our traffic grants, over 27,000. So even with issues with police, maybe you're here pulling back. Police not being as willing to engage in motor vehicle stops. This year alone is 3,200 citations, okay? And Ed, as you know, that's not counting all of our verbal stops. Where we saw people, we don't actually write them a citation. That number is impressive, and I can tell you, I probably don't have a complaint. So we're out there, we're educating the drivers of slowing down, our hands-free. If you saw that article in the Sun Chronicle, out of all the communities and within the Sun Chronicle, we were the number-one agency over Atterboro, some of these big municipalities, trying to deal with the hands-free violation offenders. On average, to give you an idea, we average 69.26 calls a day. That's police calls every single day. So it's substantial. It's, so we're running three police officers and a sergeant, and we're running almost, I think the number's a little higher, honestly. I think it's close to 28,000, but we're running almost three and a half calls, you know, every single hour. So when you, so the hours of three to four on a Tuesday when you had no calls, well, now you just took all those calls and you just dumped them into another. And this does not count our calls for Gillette Stadium. During Gillette Stadium, we create one call, and we use a platform designed by the state, and all of our calls and incidents that occur during events are dumped into that. So that is not even included in that number.
Chief, does every one of those calls necessitate a response? Or are some of those calls handled by the dispatcher? Or is that somebody's responding?
That's a, that's a police officer's been assigned to that call.
Okay.
Some of them could be a walk-in with a fraud case, but the officer is sitting there, meeting with them, going over their reports. But they're actual police actions.
Got it. Thank you.
Crashes were up to 249, 16 overdoses, and four fatal. Our fatal number is up by one. Our crashes are up over 100 because of COVID, but that number is actually lower. We were at one point, I'd think around 600 when everybody was. But these are just crashes that required an accident report. And department-wide, the training requirements, training is, with the police reform, has been, it's been a massive undertaking because it's department-wide changes. So on average, we're, we owe over 3,000 hours of training. Almost all of it is mandated. We do offer some professional development, up to 16 hours, but right now, we can't even get to that because of some of the state mandates requiring us.
100, sorry, 166 arrests. What is that? I'm not sure what that.
That's people that we joined the team, became, stayed at the hotel down on H. S. Street.
That's the number for what, what time period?
It's like a year, one year.
166?
That's low.
One arrest every two days.
Oh, that's low. We used to be, when Gillette was in its day, we were pushing, I'm going to say 900. This is all prior to the PC law, where we didn't have the discretion with intoxicated people. There was a time, if we let an intoxicated person leave our presence, we were liable for it. Now, we're able to give to a sober party as long as they're not incapacitated or disorderly. We have found many ways with COVID. We have summons and substantial amount of people that would have been arrested. So we're trying to pull back taking people into custody because of COVID, and I can honestly say the courts never adapted to COVID. They are backlog now, probably two and a half years. And this has to do with divorces. This has to do with evictions, but all the criminal cases, too. So we have victims of crime. People who are actually victims haven't seen their court case in a year and a half.
Any new crash hotspots? Are they kind of like the Walnut Street 140, like the same?
I could pull it up. We have a, we do all of our accidents. Anybody involved in an accident, we can give them a card. And we create Crash Logic. So a Foxborough resident, you get in a car accident, you go online. Probably within 24 hours, you can download your accident report. So they do have graphs where they are, but of course, 140, Route 1, some of those intersections. But we, I could go on to that, how we take that data, and that's where we start to apply some of our, because directed patrol isn't just directed patrol. You need to stop some people out because someone wants you to be there. You need to have some analytics. You need to have crash data. Someone wants the road dropped down to 25 miles an hour, but we haven't had a car accident there in five years. I'm not sure I can say this is a safety issue. It doesn't exist. They don't like that answer always, but the data is the data, and that's what we have to work with.
I just found it fascinating, chief, that you had, out of the thousands of calls, you had under 200 arrests. I had no real knowledge of any of those ratios or numbers. I mean.
So if you look at that, but you also see you have over 1,070 police reports. These are full-fledged reports that require an investigation. Many of those are criminal complaints. Hundreds of them are, where we, someone has a suspended license, okay? You know what? The license is suspended because they didn't make the, they didn't, not because it was suspended for OUI, but it was suspended because they didn't realize that they missed a ticket. So what we do is we create a report for that. We fully write the citation. Then we have to create a document. We call it a WA warrant, and we electronically file that with the courts. So that's, a lot of those are criminal complaints that are pending. Years ago, the arrests probably would have been in the 500s and less complaints because you're doing the job twice. Sometimes it's just easier, just arrest them, book them, and off they go. But we have so many dynamic issues with that right now that we're trying to, you know, minimize impact on people's lives. I mean, some people are just unavoidable, and they're coming with us, but. The administrative update, we have, making sure that we max all our MIA credits for our insurance. So we have a certain amount of list that we have to meet in training and safety. So we meet that again this year to make sure the town gets its maximum deduction. We got over 81,000 from the gaming commission on a grant, and we were able to use that for anti-bias training, recon training, and one unmarked vehicle, which reduced our capital A cost this year. We procured safety equipment for the department for civil disturbances and crowd control. Believe it or not, we had none. So now every officer is equipped if needed. We've applied for the body cammer grant, and that award should be coming out in the next couple of weeks. Obviously, been working on a strategy to exit civil service so we could enhance our hiring options, and that's been ongoing. And the pre-employment background and training, we do the majority of the background checks for Semrec and all their dispatches. We help them out because they don't have the assets to do that or the authority to do some of the checks that we do. So this year alone, we've already taken on nine offices, five full-time and four reserves. Those are full, comprehensive background checks. Everything from credit checks to where they grew up, every police incident they've ever been involved in. We do a medical, we do a psychological. So it's been challenging to try to schedule all those and get it all done.
Are other towns helping with the Semrec?
I think they may be, but we're just good at it.
Okay.
The Semrec dispatches are, they're not as much as our police officers, for sure. We're not as involved in that. And then I forgot to write the number in, but one of the things that we're inundated, I don't know if it's Foxborough, because everybody wants a report from Foxborough. Why? Because we have a tendency to attract public figures. So we are up to, right now, 1,800 public requests for reports. Those vary from anything. We get them from attorneys who want, I want all your accident reports for the last three months. It's a public request. So we literally have to manage that. We have to deliver on all of these public requests and be in compliance with the law. So one of my administrative assistants literally is probably four hours a day dealing with public requests. Some of them are dynamic. Some of them want statistical data. I want all use of force incidents. We are, because of the stadium, anytime a college comes up here, we have to give every single piece of data because the college kids came here to be in compliance. So it's daunting. I can tell you that the amount of time, we've tried to streamline it. We've tried to redact, and we have to redact every single report by hand because names, date of birth, victims, et cetera, what we can release and what we can't release. We have to be very clear that we don't release a report that should never go out. Gillette Stadium, again, we probably spend, 2,500 is probably a downside at this point. Well over 3,000 hours just trying to manage that. And this isn't the actual running of the events. This is the pre-game. This is the all-agency meetings, and one of the biggest issues is right now is getting police officers to work. I'm as far out to Burlington at this point. So police officers aren't releasing their offices because they're all short. They're all being forced, and this is statewide. This isn't like unique to two or three towns. The state police have the same issue on every single event. We're getting it done, but the amount of time is daunting. But we make sure it happens. We had no concerts this year. We thought we had concerts. We didn't have concerts, but we have to plan for all those. We just don't say, oh, geez, it's happening tomorrow. We build everything in place, and then, you know, it doesn't happen. Our revs, we've seen unbelievable numbers, almost 20,000 fans at revs games. They're in the playoffs. The past games, I hope we get a couple more wins. The fans always have a tendency to behave. And then I just, closing comments real briefly is I just want to thank the board, everybody, the town manager, most importantly, residents of Foxborough for their outstanding support of the department. It is felt, I have officers who have come over from other departments, and they are just in awe about how they are treated by the residents in town, by the town manager, by the other department heads, our partnership with the fire department. They can't believe it. So running an agency isn't just developing policies and making sure you meet the budget. It's making sure that you treat employees like people and understand that they have ups and downs and managing that. And that's a town-wide effect that Foxborough delivers to its employees. So I just want to thank everyone because it starts here. It really does. It starts at the top, and you have the board, and Bill and Mike, they're the next level, and they expect it, and my staff are really happy that they work for Foxborough. And that's kind of the year in review.
Well done, chief.
Well done.
I downsized this substantially, okay?
I just want to say a couple things if it's okay. I'm just, first of all, I think Mike has done an outstanding job as a chief. And he's still, let's not forget, he's still a new chief. And he's been in the job, what, not even, not even two years, right?
Oh, no, I finished two.
You already?
Actually, just reminded me.
Two years, yeah. Just like that.
Finished his second year. So now what I do is review, so that's a good thing. But anyways, I just want to say he's done a terrific job. And you know, he's taken on some very difficult challenges during that period of time. I mean, this whole Police Reform Act has been not a walk in the park for any chief in Massachusetts, but the chief has a good handle on it. He's ahead of it. He knows what he's doing. I mean, getting us to the civil service issue that we're going to talk about in a few minutes is really extraordinary. It's something that's been worked on for a number of years, and he's been able to make that work. So I'm really grateful for his service and for his department, who's done a terrific job working through a very difficult climate in America. And so I think just in being, you know, a host community for a major venue like Gillette is a challenge unto itself, but also just to run the day-to-day operations the way they do is in the professional way that they do it is not to be, it has to be underscored in so many different ways. And I just think the fact here that they got the credentials, are certified, working their way towards credentialing is another major milestone. So congratulations to the chief and to his department for a fun job this year.
Questions?
Early on, Mike, you had talked about something on the training aspect, and you made a comment about the training council in that they're not putting out programs as they did five or six years ago in terms of providing, let's say, the in-service training here in Foxborough. Has that gone the way of the dodo?
So the police reform, the MPTC was designated as, because they were actually going to take that, which was the training agency for all police departments.
That's the MPTC?
Yeah, they were actually going to throw that away and start from nothing with no employees. So there was some consensus and some common sense that says, listen, we have a system in place. Let's build it. Well, they're trying to build it, and they're trying to build the curriculum. Because at the end of the day, they do want police officers certified, which is good. Like Mass Chiefs has been asking for nine years for certification. But what they want to do is actually, but if you're going to raise the bar, you do have to provide the service. You do have to provide a facility. We're like, I'm part of the SSPI, which is the surrounding cities and towns who literally went out and found buildings that they could rent, and we established our own training curriculum off of the MPTC because there is no localized training facility in the state to train police officers. They don't have it, and they haven't built it. They are in the process of getting some land, but they haven't generated the funding. They haven't built the buildings. So they have these little academies all over the place, but they don't have a professionalized training process for police officers where they should be going on a regular basis. So it's been absolutely, COVID has had a benefit. There's been some ability to do a lot of online training, but at the end of the day, your defensive tactics, your use of force, your firearm training, your less lethal training, all of that can't be done online. And eventually, you do lose a little bit of the, like, the intangibles that you cannot duplicate online. You need, some of this needs to be, like verbal de-escalation. We do training, BoZAR training for identifying people in crowds. This is all hands-on. BoZi training, for identifying people in crowds. This is all hands-on. This is at your in-person, at Logan Airport. You're put into places where you literally have to go try to find people in a crowd. You can't duplicate that. So it's been very much of a challenge, and it's really, we don't have all the answers. The police academies right now are all filled. All I know is everything in November is, December is filled. So if I hire a police officer today, I don't have an academy till maybe March. So you take that, and then you add a seven months of a training and four months of an FTO program.
It's a year.
It's a year. It's a year and a half right now. So getting out of civil service, being able to attract more people, there's a savings associated with it because of the time as well.
So with that, do we want to tee up? Are there any more questions before we kind of, that was kind of a natural layup into our next item, which we're going to actually take item 3.3. So do you want to just kind of tee that up, you two gentlemen? And we just exited executive session for this, so we'll be here to take a vote, a vote on this, and then we'll move into this Civil Service article on the special town meeting warrant that goes hand-in-hand with this as well.
So just in summary, we, the board has considered this and reviewed this with Labor Council, with the chief, with Mike Johns, of course, and working on the language and a memorandum of understanding that has been reached between the town and the police union, the Local 379 MCOP, AFL-CIO for the town of Foxborough. And this agreement essentially agrees that the union is in agreement with the town that we will remove civil service, the department from civil service, and that will, and that will become, allow the ability for the town to bring this to town meeting for full consideration of removal, removing civil service from the town. It then would go to the state legislature for a bill that would allow the town to become, get out of civil service, but also retain the rights of those individuals who already have civil service rights within the department. That's why it requires a special act to do that. So that's part of that, the language that goes into town meeting. The memorandum goes first before we get to town meeting, because we don't want to get to town meeting and not have an agreement, because that just creates further confusion and controversy. So it was good to have the conversation first, and after a fair amount of time and effort, one of the major considerations in getting the union to agree to this was that we would actually fully fund the Quinn bill for all police officers in Foxborough. Just a little bit of history about that, back in, the chief was pointing out earlier in our discussions tonight, that in 2009, the town, all the communities across Massachusetts were members of the Quinn bill, which half of it was being funded by the Commonwealth and half was being funded by the local jurisdiction. What has happened, what happened then, though, was that the governor at the time, Governor Patrick, decided that it was, he was no longer going to fund the Quinn bill, and as such, the half cost became full cost for some, many, many cities and towns across the state. Ways to address that were that some towns decided to change the payment formula for that, either reducing the payment formula or decided to pay the full formula, and then, and then just pay for them and just absorb the entire impact, cost impact of doing that. Others would make it, change it into like a lump sum payment for having education capabilities. So what this language does is award police officers who have an associate's degree, a bachelor's degree, or a master's degree, or even a jurisdoctorate degree, a sum of money which would be ten percent, twenty percent, and twenty-five percent respectively of the numbers I just, of the categories I just described, which would allow them a portion of their pay, there be additional pay to them for having those degrees. The advantage of having this is twofold. One is the fact that getting out of civil service limits, takes away the limitations of the state civil service system of how we hire employees, and then takes that and puts it back into the local department to actually administer that process throughout HR department as well as the police department. The second piece of that is that by having the support for the Quinn bill, it allows us to be competitive throughout the Commonwealth. And as people have been watching in the news and across the country, it's more, it's becoming more and more difficult to attract talent to police departments based on the fact that it is a very difficult job, and there's a lot of, a lot of things placed upon the department's officers themselves. So as a result, it becomes more difficult for us to attract good candidates for these roles. This places it in a much more competitive position, and as such, it becomes, it was a great trade-off for which one, I think, benefits both parties by having us out of civil service as well as providing the competitive edge that we need to keep, to hire and to keep good talent here in the community. So hopefully that summarizes it. I mean, there are a lot of different pieces that are done on administrative level, which we won't, which I won't get into tonight, but certainly, it's, the summary of this proposal is one which I think is truly a benefit for both the police department and the town of Foxborough and for the offices of the department.
All right, great. So the next two items kind of tie together. We have to approve that MOU, and then it will have to go to town meeting floor, and that's why it's on the warrant. So I think that summary really covers both pieces. I do want to put it on our agenda in case, I know we were talking about the MOU in executive session, but in case anyone had any specific questions about the warrant article while we have chief here, I want to allow for that discussion under the agenda. So why don't we go ahead and take item 3.3, Seth? Any questions before we do that? No? Okay. So why don't we take that one, then we'll move on to the warrant article and see if there's any questions there.
Motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with police union Local 379 MCOP, AFL-CIO regarding exiting civil service.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor? Hi. And do we have to do any kind of roll call for that? Are we good, just with the regular vote?
No, it's open, open session.
Okay, wonderful. And will that be available publicly on the internet or anything before town meeting, in case people want to see that? It's obviously an important piece, I think, of the article to prepare people. So will that be under the contracts page, Mike?
It will. We'll put it in the contracts page on the police section. And there are two minor edits that I want to mention here.
Okay.
This is something Bill noticed, and it was on page three at the very bottom. It's preceding, not proceeding.
The very last.
Very last sentence.
The very last sentence.
Yep.
And just, we will no longer, we'll continue to, we used to have to approve certain, like, educational things, so this is, you're just able to do it now. That stays as is, okay?
And the second edit, the chair noticed, we'll update this to tonight's date if it is voted to October, what was it, 12th, 2021.
Okay, great. And does the union, so the union has already executed this?
Yes.
Does that?
We can get them signed.
Okay. All right, great. So just on that last page, too, it says September 2023. Okay. All right, great. So it seems like we're good on that one. I just wanted to give the board the opportunity in case there was any discussion, questions about that warrant article. It seems like we've covered it in detail through the departmental update and the MOU, but any further questions? No?
One quick one, just out of curiosity. Once it gets approved from town meeting and goes to the state, how long does that usually take?
It really depends upon the action of the legislature, but we'll, I'll be speaking with Representative Barrows and Senator Feeney. I mean, what we'll do is we'll file this as a local petition, and then I already had conversations with the representative, letting him know this is coming. So as soon as it passes town meeting, we'll file it, as soon as the town clerk releases the record.
Okay, wonderful. So we don't need any vote there. We're going to actually take a position on the warrant articles at our October 26th meeting. So this is just for us to ask any questions on warrant articles tonight. Okay, I think we've had you for an hour.
Okay, it wasn't too bad.
I think we're good. Thank you so much for coming in and the wonderful work and updates that your department's doing.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
All right. So the next item is review the special town meeting warrant articles, and then we're going to sign the warrant. There have been some changes to the warrant, which I'll let Bill just kind of outline as soon as we're done. And then a timeline went around to AdCom and the Board of Selectmen as far as what it will look like from here. So tonight, if there's anything that you guys want to have presented or discussed around the articles outside of the planning ones, because remember, there is a public hearing on the 14th, and I just want to make use of pages time, our time, you know, that is a meeting that we can all zoom into, we can watch on cable access. So if you have any questions, I think it might be helpful, you know, to save those for that session, but certainly if anyone has any questions tonight, they're welcome as well. And then there are a couple other warrant articles, like the CIP one and others. Just didn't know if the board had any questions on like the street acceptance or the OPEB. I would like you to run through the OPEB one, Bill.
Sure.
The sewer area map. You know, some of them are pretty, are pretty cut and dry, but if you can just give us an update on the changes, and then if you can just give us a quick presentation of the OPEB, and then I'll let, you know, the board, if you guys have any other ones you want covered, or you have questions about, or you want to discuss as a board, let's do that after.
Okay, great. All right, so thank you. So I want to start with the OPEB because I think that's one that's, that I know that was on people's minds following the annual town meeting. So there was some confusion about whether or not we made our 2020 payment for the OPEB, and that, what I want to try to do is give you sort of a breakdown of three categories. One is 2020, 2021, and 2022. So just for clarification, we did make our 2020 payment, and those payments were made on a quarterly basis as we normally do under any normal circumstances. So 2020 is paid for, it's in the books. We paid the money to our, the Bartholomew, which is our investment company that has this money already invested for us. For 2021, this was the one that we got a little bit of controversy because this was talked about last March after following COVID, the COVID determination that we, and I recommended to everybody at that time, they said we should wait and see, you know, what our revenues come in at before we make a commitment to 2021. And what happened was COVID actually impacted us in 2020, but not to a lesser, far lesser degree than it did in 2021. And ultimately, what we took in, what really is the primary source of funding for the OPEB funding, funding level is from the meals tax. And in a normal year, we collect somewhere close to about a million dollars a year for meals tax, and that more or less gets directed towards the, towards the OPEB funding mechanism. So the request, the required payment based upon the actuarial's report is that we should be making a payment of $1,64,069 on an annual basis for 2021 and 2022. $985,000 from the general fund, $985,135 from the general fund, and $63,156 from the water enterprise fund, and another $15,778 from the sewer enterprise fund. The lump sum payment, if approved at town meeting, would in fact be paid in November of this calendar year. So 2021, even though it didn't make it into, it wasn't paid in fiscal '21, will be paid in calendar '21, and that will make us whole for fiscal '21. For 2022, we have not made a commitment on that payment as well yet, but our goal is to do the same thing. And that reason, and we do think, by the way, that we will be fine with making the $1 million market this year for the meals tax based upon where our early estimates are coming in at. We only have one quarter of revenues in, but it looks like it's getting back on pace as to where we were about a year and a half ago. So our goal would be to make another lump sum payment at, to be made after the town meeting approval in May of '22, May of 2022, or the fall of 2022, depending upon where we fall with our revenues at that time. All right, so is everybody clearing that? So even though we didn't make a commitment to it in an article at town meeting this past year, we would do that as part of the annual town meeting, or if a special within the annual, if we had to, to make that payment. So we'd get '22 back on track. '23, we think, will put us right back on track to where we've been right along. So there were, there's two real, two years where we, in fact, were out of sync. That's 2021 and 2022, but we should get back on track for 2023.
And both will be made.
Yes.
In entirety.
And we will be paid in entirety. Now, the good news is that although we have not funded OPEB since FY '20, our investments have grown by $2.86 million, which if you look at the $1,640,000 commitment that we're supposed to be making every year, we more than made that up for, more than, in terms of our investment capital. Now, that's obviously a fluid situation that could change, you know, depending upon market conditions, but if we get back on track, we should be ahead of the schedule based upon that investment situation. So we're very pleased with where we are in that situation right now. We actually looked into the possibility that, that if we could use, maybe use the Opera money for helping to make that payment, but it doesn't look like that is part of the rule, the treasury rules at this time. So another way that we're going to address that is that, and I'll get into this a little bit tomorrow night at the summit, but just in generally, what's happened is that during fiscal '21, our local receipts were down by as, almost as much as eight percent overall, and so, in terms of what our estimates were. So as a result of that, we have the ability to use some of that Opera money to reduce our, to artificially reduce our revenue stream for fiscal '22, which actually allows us to then possibly rebuild our free cash position at the end of '22. So is everybody understand that? So what happens is that if we lower our estimates by $710,000, which is what we lost last year, we can actually then, and then, and then if we collect beyond that $710, which would be our normal collection rate, anything that comes in excess of that will be, will go into, fall into free cash for fiscal '23. Is anybody far, because it's a little complicated to show, to say that, but I want, I want everybody to understand. So if our estimates, our estimates will likely come in ahead of the estimate that we're, of the $700,000. It'll come up above that, and anything that gets in excess will then go fall into free cash for fiscal '23. So when we get certified next year, that number will be higher, which then puts us in a really good position to make payments towards OPEB going forward.
And just since you mentioned the summit, I'm going to mention it now before I forget. Has that deck been circulated to all three boards and committees?
Yes.
Okay, you guys have seen it. I know I saw a draft of it. Maybe I just don't remember it coming back out again.
Well, we sent it back out.
Okay, okay.
We sent it back out.
Can we just get it uploaded in Board Docs, too? And then, is it available somewhere online if people want to follow along? I know it used to be on like the town manager's page. I'm just thinking for tomorrow night.
We can, we can do that for tomorrow.
Okay. If we can just make sure we have it up before the meeting in case people want to, okay.
All right. So that, hopefully that covers the explanation of where OPEB is. Now, the next article that was, do you have any questions about OPEB before I move on?
Yeah, Ashley, so, quick question. So do we have to take any action? I know there was, you know, some talk about whether, you know, it said that it had to be funded, which we are, so it's not, not, but do we have to take any action about, you know, I know there was some talk whether we had to use the meals tax, if we didn't, and, you know, you know, because.
Aren't we?
We are using, we are using.
But we're approving that financial policy, I think, later tonight that you're maybe talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, oh, okay.
And we are, and we are using the meals tax. So everybody's clearing that. In fact, we're using more than the meals tax.
So we are anyhow, but, so why I was going to ask, because at the, not the last AdCom meeting, but the week before when I was there, I know, I think at one point, Jack had, he recalled town meeting differently than I did. He recalled it saying that it was supposed to be a 50/50 split for the, for the meals tax. Fifty percent to go to the OPEB, fifty percent to go to roads. And so I just, I just remembered it just saying that the OPEB would be funded, and then, and I think, I think, you know, I was just, that's why I was curious if, 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 so what we'll do tonight, we'll just, we'll just clear that up as far as.
Right, yeah. So the policy, actually, the new financial policy addresses that.
Okay. It's on, if you just, it's on, it starts on page six in kind of the bolded area, I think, what you're looking for.
Okay.
Under the action item.
Yeah.
It really wasn't clear, so now, now we've clarified it.
Okay.
Okay. So that we, and the goal is to try and put it, put it up, at least, was it up to a million dollars a year towards roads in addition to chapter 90 money? So that's, so that's, so our goal would be to try and, you know, supplement that, try to, so we can spend at least a million dollars on roads each year.
And then it does spell out to, like, if we ever wanted to forego it, it has to have a two-thirds vote to do that, but, you know, that's all spelled out, which wasn't in the policy before.
Yep.
So it, kind of the timing is perfect for that policy to come back up, that everyone's reviewed it tonight, since we're talking about this.
Yep.
Right. Okay. So, so I do think, so your questions are fair questions. So I just, it's one that which, you know, we need to, we need to address, because it wasn't clear. There's been a lot of urban myth about how this has been handled over the years, but we went back and researched all the minutes, all the motions, the, all the discussion at town meeting, and there was no real reflection of that. There was, however, a statement made by the then-town manager who said, "This is how we're going to use it," and that was a commitment that was made. That's what everybody heard at town meeting, and so that's what's being reflected really in the policy at this point.
Yeah, because there was a lot of controversy over it.
It was.
And I think, I think, I think that's, that statement was what made some people change their minds, because it was the third time it had come forward, and it had failed the first two times. And so, yeah, I mean, it was, you know, preceded you, Bill, obviously. So I think, I think it was, you know, people's, people have different recollections.
Right.
Of how it went down that night. Yeah.
So this, this helps to clarify. That's why policies are important, you know. So this helps to clarify, that's why policies are important, you know, to put them in writing, that way it's clear going forward.
And now it's bolded and underlined to the policy, so.
Okay, so the next one was the, the next one that was a question mark was the amount that we were supposed to pay to the Southeastern Mass Regional School. Southeastern Regional School Committee had indicated, like a week before town meeting, the annual town meeting, that they had clarified their position on an SRT2 grant. And what was, what indicated there was that we weren't able to use all the money that was, that we counted on for that contribution. So we fell short of our contribution by $38,954. So this will actually bring that payment up to speed for the entire fiscal year, and we'll be in balance with the regional school district at that point. All right, any questions on that? Okay, other articles that you want me to touch upon?
So the zoning bylaws, that's kind of one through six now, I think, have we mentioned too how that we lost a bunch of articles? I don't think that's been discussed yet.
Yes, we lost, yeah, we lost, so we originally started out with about 17 articles, we're now down to 13 articles. Two articles were put forward by the Craft Group, and then we received notification last week that they do not wish to proceed to go forward at this time with both articles. So those have been dropped from the latest version of the warrant. The other two articles related to street acceptances, which we were notified that they were, that the developers had missed a couple, had missed, upon a final inspection of the, from the Conservation Commission, one of the retention bases that affects both streets, did not come in, did not grow to the satisfaction of the Conservation Commission, so they have to go back and redo it. So now we're going to hold off accepting those until those are finished. So that was just, that just came up really literally within a week or two ago, and they actually, that was on final inspection in preparation for town meeting. All right, so that takes care of those four articles. The other ones, the only other one that was, that I think that I can, comes to mind, I can certainly go through them all if you'd like, but the other one that was the change to the CIP committee, and that was a change that clarified the language whether or not the border water sewer commissioners could actually appoint a person other than themselves to serve, or somebody at their own discretion. And that wasn't, the language in the, in the current language in the bylaw is not, does not truly reflect that, but in practice, it had been done that way for many years. This language actually clarifies that once and for all.
And I'd ask Bill to go and just talk to the water sewer commissioners and make sure they were in agreement with this change since it impacted them.
Right.
And you did that.
Yes, I did.
And they were on board with that, so.
I actually checked with Chris Gallagher, and he said it actually brought up at one of their meetings, and they were fine with it, so.
So I think that covers all the warrant articles. Are there any other warrant articles you wish to discuss as a board? Otherwise, according to the schedule that's in board docs, we'll have the public hearing, or, sorry, planning board will have the public hearing on the 14th to deal with the zoning-related articles. And then at our next meeting, we will take positions on these articles as well.
Is it going to be the board's desire to do all articles, or are you going to, or is it, well, you can decide that at the night of the meeting?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can talk about it now. I think that the board, it sounded like you guys want, Seth and Steph, if I heard right, you guys want to take positions on all articles, if I'm not misunderstanding from last time.
There was, there was a couple that I questioned, but they're actually not there anymore, so.
Okay. Yeah, and I think especially Board of Selectmen articles that were being put forth, we wanted to take a position on. But I think some of the others, yeah, I think, I think some of the others, I feel a little bit indifferent about taking. You know, we'll all go to town meeting and we'll all vote individually. So I don't know if the board has spots or feelings, particularly like on the planning articles, taking positions. Anyone feel passionately either way? Otherwise, I think we take positions on the Board of Selectmen articles. But I'm open either way, I mean, that's why we're having the conversation.
So every other article is Board of Selectmen other than?
The zoning ones.
Other than the zoning ones.
Yep, the planning and zoning. And then the civil service one is not as well.
That is, that is.
Yep, that is more so. It's just really, we wouldn't be taking positions on the planning ones.
Yeah.
And then we'd take positions on the rest of them.
Yeah.
And I think in the past.
I think the confusion for me, and I don't want to speak for Seth, was just that, you know, so you, so at town meeting, see, so my thing is if we're voting on any of the articles to make a recommendation, why wouldn't we do it on all of them? You know what I'm saying? Like, because otherwise, even though we've brought them forward, it's not, you know, I think that's the perception at town meeting, is that, you know, that just like during the, like the budget, there's a line that says town manager recommended, Board of Selectmen recommendation, and then AdCom recommendation. So I know this is set up, the warrant article is set up a little bit differently, but I think the perception is that if we're voting on any of the articles, why wouldn't, you know, we're making a recommendation, why wouldn't we be recommending?
I mean, I'm open to it, but like we said, I think, I think people's memory though, because I actually went back and watched some of the meetings from like 19 and 17, I think people maybe go way back and they remember, it's not been done the same way every year. And I think in my time on the board particularly, I remember we took a position on the CIP article and obviously the budget, but the rest of them, we just kind of voted on all of them at once. And, you know, we can certainly, we can certainly do that. I think it's really just.
Well, you know, either way is really fine, but the fact that we do it different every year doesn't really make sense to me. You know, last, last year, we were voting on the CIP article, we voted on the Debbie Kunniff, you know, so we're.
Yeah, it's not all of them, yeah, so it's.
Well, that's what I mean. I think, I think it's better that, you know, either we do or we don't.
Yeah.
Like, rather than picking and choosing which ones we're going to vote on to show support, you know, we went on, I mean, those were all, you know, good articles, you know, to show whether we supported or didn't, but why wouldn't we do it all?
So I think for me, it's simply, we're voting on the articles that the Board of Selectmen bring forward.
Those were citizen articles, they weren't brought forward by.
Yeah, true, last time, but I'm saying for me this year, that's kind of what I'm looking at.
So that's what I'm, oops, sorry.
No, go ahead, yeah, I'm curious to hear everyone's thoughts.
So that's, that's where I'm trying to understand the process or the procedure, is that Stephanie mentioned recommendation. I feel like more so we're sort of, as the policy board, we're sponsoring these. And so to some extent, there is six, you know, the first six articles are zoning or the planning board, right? To what extent are we sponsoring those as articles as part of a cohesive warrant? So are we actually delivering this? Is that our role in the process is to sponsor and deliver?
No, when it comes to zoning articles, it is not. You're simply allowing them to go on to the warrant. It's the Selectmen's warrant, okay, because they, you're the only one that can actually open up a warrant for a town meeting, okay? So, but when it comes to zoning articles, they actually have to make a recommendation on town meeting floor before it can be acted on. Okay, so.
They're voted, you mean?
Yeah, they have to be, they have to be voted on.
Right, so but, but Bill, that sounds like different language for the same thing. You're saying allow it onto the warrant, I'm saying sponsor it, which is in effect, if we don't, if the Board of Selectmen disagrees with zoning article, you know, article number four, and it's decided on this board that we don't think building heights is written accurately, or we're not aligned with how this is written, or we, this board is not interested in bringing this article to town meeting as it's currently structured? Is this what the process is to decide like, this doesn't feel right, or we want this to be changed or different? Or does Planning Board have carte blanche to say, hey, this is how we're going to send it to town meeting, and here it is, and you guys can take a look. AdCom's going to recommend, but this is what's going.
So it is a little different with an annual town meeting. Normally, the ones that come from the departments themselves get placed on the warrant because the Selectmen open up the warrant, okay? With a special town meeting, it's really, you have a little bit more jurisdiction over a special town meeting warrant. It's a little different because ultimately, you can reject, you can add or reject any article that gets put before you for a special town meeting warrant. For an annual, it's a little different because according to the language, my understanding is that if it gets submitted, it gets put on. And even there's a difference between a person who does, who does as a petition article, is a smaller requirement for a petition article on an annual versus a special. So if I think for, it's 100 votes for a special, it's 10 votes for an annual.
To get a petition.
To be put it on the warrant itself.
It sounds like we should just maybe take positions on everything. I think my, you know, looking at both sides of it, is I would hate for like a planning article, we take a position, and then AdCom, you know, weighs that too heavily, or, you know, I guess.
So it really, there is no, there's no, there's no one answer to this. And I've done this in four different communities, and I will tell you that it's different everywhere you go. So, and it really depends upon the board. So if the board feels strongly about a certain article, you can act on it. If you choose not to, you don't have to act on it. You can say, we're going to approve the warrant, let the warrant go through, and then it happens.
See, for me, that makes no sense at all. Like, I don't care which way we do it.
Let's just do them all.
Well, in either way, you know, like, I just don't think we should pick and choose because, so for example, last year, the, you know, the board felt, you know, one of the warrant articles, everybody, everybody didn't support it, and I supported it. Why should we be bringing, and, you know, and then another one we all supported? I don't care which way we do it, I just think we should be consistent.
Yeah, I agree.
That's all. You know, whichever way the board decides, I'm okay with, but I don't think every year we should pick and choose which articles we're going to support or not support, you know, and, you know, that's just my take on it.
Yeah, and that's, I think I'm aligned with that, Stephanie, I'm just wondering if it's by supporting it, that means it goes on. Because I'm trying to, what I'm trying to get after is, if the board does not support an article, does it even show up here? Like, does it go past this meeting?
So it's two phases. The first step is to put it on the warrant, the second part is the recommendation. If you choose to do a recommendation.
Why is there a recommendation coming out of a Board of Selectmen?
Well, because, well, that's the conversation you're having right now amongst yourselves. You don't have to make a recommendation on an article, you can choose to not to. But the bottom line is that if you want to, if you open up the warrant, and all these articles come through, then you have to decide if they want to go on the warrant or not. That's.
That's, okay, that's the key distinction then, Bill, is, I'm sorry to.
No, no, this is good conversation.
Deciding whether we want it on the warrant is what I'm talking, what I'm saying is like, it's not recommending, it's, is it there, or is it not?
Yes, right.
Does it get to the advisory committee at all?
Exactly.
So whatever ends up on here, it goes to the advisory committee for a recommendation. But we're the deciding policy board, what makes it on here?
Correct.
But do we have, so I might be wrong, but if a, if a resident decides they want to bring a citizen's article forward, and they do everything they have to do.
That has to go on, right.
It has, it has to go.
So distinction there, Stephanie, sounds like how the article is, once the warrant is open, how the article is presented for review by this point.
See, a petition article would go to the town clerk, the clerk would certify the names as being proper voters, and as, and once it gets certified, it then gets presented, it gets put on the warrant. So that's, that's automatic. But as far as the, you know, anybody else during a special, the board could say, I, we only want, you know, we only want five articles for this town meeting, you could say that. That's not been the tradition. I will tell you that, it has not been a tradition. Usually when, you know, the board has always respected that the department head submitting something, or whatever department or another committee has submitted something, they've put it on. But as far as, but you do have that at discretion, that's clear. The part of it that, the next part is not so clear, is whether or not you want to make a recommendation on any article that's on the warrant. Because that's been all over the map, it has been.
Yeah, yeah. That's how I feel a little, that's why I say if we really want to, let's do it on the Board of Selectmen, which I don't think is picking and choosing. I think it's us taking a position on the ones we're bringing forward. Yes.
And I think traditionally, at least for me, a special town meeting, any articles that we're letting on other than ours, I sort of look at, we're letting them on the special warrant, but then further down the road, I'm voting on it as an individual at town meeting. So I don't think as chair, I necessarily said we had a vote on it as a group, that just the ones we brought forward, we voted on. I can't disagree with Steph, but I think Steph's coming from a place of being on, and you, Seth, you know, on the AdCom for so long, why wouldn't we do the whole thing? I look at it that, everything else that's in the special town warrant other than ours, I'm going to, I'm going to vote on as a citizen on the 15th.
Even if you disagreed with whatever, maybe you never did, but like there's 10 articles, and they're on the special town meeting, and you read them, and they're like, wow, these, these don't make any sense to me. And you had the ability as a member of the Board of Selectmen to actually impact what was going to town meeting.
But correct me if I'm wrong, we would have already done that.
Right.
We would have already said two weeks ago or a month ago.
We're not going to let that.
We're not going to let that one on.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the timing difference is, but I'm like.
Well, the timing difference is if someone sponsored an article other than a citizen's petition, and we totally disagree with it, someone from planning says, you know, we want, you know, a 79-story high-rise, just as an absurd.
Sure, example, yeah.
I don't think we would have let that article on, they would have brought the article to us, we would have reviewed it with all the others, and someone would have said, I don't like this, let's not push this forward.
And I think all the planning ones have been a long time coming, maybe besides temporary outdoor dining, because that kind of came up because of COVID. There may be components in there though, like maybe you don't like a piece of the outdoor dining, or maybe you don't like a piece of the accessory dwelling. I don't, I don't know that I want to stop that from going on the warrant, and having the public hearings, and hearing from citizens, and letting it go to town meeting floor, but it doesn't necessarily mean, you know, we all have to support every single piece of that.
At town meeting as a resident.
Right.
We vote, we'll cast a vote just like everybody, like everybody else. Yeah, I think, I think for me, it's just, like I said, you know, whichever way, but just to be consistent, because those citizens ones were not special, they were spring town meeting. That was that last town meeting.
Well, I think that was such a different case, like that one was just a total out of the box, that one citizen's petition.
We.
Well, both of them were out of the box that I think we had to make an opinion on both of those. But those were the outliers, not, you know, those were two very unique situations.
So maybe that's what we do, it's the Board of Selectmen ones and the citizen's petition ones, and let the other ones, you know, kind of play with as they are going forward. But whoever's chair next year may not agree.
Why would we do that? Why would we, I mean, Board of Selectmen ones, I understand if they're being sponsored by, but why would we pick which citizens ones? Or pick, what's the difference between a citizens one?
I'm just using an example since we did that.
Or the ones coming from planning. I would say if we're going to have that.
I think there's a huge difference between the citizens.
I would say if we're going to have that, no, but you're still impacting the perception at town meeting of what we've supported or not supported. I think it's just if we're all or nothing, either vote them or don't. Like, I don't care which way we go, but I think picking and choosing just doesn't.
All the other ones, the zoning ones, it's sort of like a passive approval, them getting on.
Yes.
The warrant.
Majority, they have public hearings, it's a whole different process.
Right, where citizens input, especially CIP last year, we had no idea that was coming, and that, we had to vet that, I think, as a board.
Why? Why do we vet it? It's going to be vetted at town meeting, like, you know.
We had a, we had a huge say in that because it impacted.
We did not have a say in that, that would be.
No, 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 but we had a say in, we had a say in, I think, I think we would have totally been way off base if we didn't make an opinion on that last year, in the same with.
So you're going to pick and choose which one?
Wait a minute, can I just say one more thing?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
The difference is, the CIP and the, what was her name?
The tax one, as you call it.
That wasn't vetted by anybody but a bunch of citizens. At least zoning is vetted by zoning Board of Appeals or the planning board. They have their set of vetting before it comes to us. We didn't see any of that with the citizens inputs.
So my understanding too, that what you're suggesting is that any citizen, any citizen's petition, and any Selectmen's article would be, a recommendation would come forward from the. So, so my understanding too, that what you're suggesting is that any citizen, any citizen's petition and any selectmen's article would be, a recommendation would come forward from the board.
That, that's my thought, but I think everyone's got different strong feelings.
So, so this is a matter of board policy. You guys can decide this. This is how you, it's entirely up to you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Again, Bill said recommendation.
Right.
And I take issue with that qualification or, or, um, describing the situation here. So can I just make an example to, to see if this helps?
Okay.
Say, Stephanie, Ed, and I think that outdoor dining is gonna cause the end of Western civilization. It's the worst idea ever. We're all opposed to it. Does it even show up?
You could decide not to put it on the warrant. You could, you absolutely have the right to do that.
If it came to a vote.
Doesn't get to town meeting.
Right. Won't get to town.
So that's what I'm thinking about is by, 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 we're sponsoring or not sponsoring, approving their, um, their place.
Yep.
On the warrant. Not recommending, or?
That's different. That's phase two. Phase one is putting it on the warrant. Phase two is a recommendation as to how the board, how the board feels about an article once it's on.
So we're owning this warrant here. We're saying.
We own this warrant.
We own it, and this is what we're putting forward.
Right.
Recommend, board of selectmen have at, I mean, um, advisory committee have at it, and then town, let's vote.
And then you could, and then you can put it, you can put it, you can insert your recommendation. If you choose on any one of those articles at a, at a different, you know, and on the twenty-sixth, for instance, you're gonna do that.
Okay. I feel good about that. I understand.
Very clear on that?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's clear as mud, I know.
Yeah, exactly.
Second, sorry, uh, uh, the fact that the rules are different.
I'm just looking for the consistency.
Yeah, they're two distinctions.
So am I. I think that's why we need to have this conversation.
Yeah.
And to me, the consistency is board of selectmen sponsored, and maybe the citizens' petitions, because they come out of nowhere.
Right.
Uh, you know, the, the others, I think we're good. Um, but I think that there's like some memories that go way back, and I've been on the board for four years now, and never have we voted on every single individual. I, I even went back and watched meetings. You know, like, even from before my time, the special town meeting before me, I went back and, and watched that one too. So, um, there's a lot of talk.
But you know something? We did vote every article in, in the spring. It, it was brought up, we're gonna accept it, we, we, we're gonna vote them all, except we pulled the CIP one out.
Right.
And said, we weren't gonna, we were gonna, we were not gonna support that one. All the rest of them, we voted as a group.
To, just like we're doing tonight, to put onto the warrant.
Did we? Yeah, see, that's a distinction.
Yeah, that's how I remember. Wasn't to go on the warrant, because if you did that, then the other CIP one, even though technically it can't.
No, it can't.
Yeah.
But we took a position on it.
Yeah.
So here's, here's where I'm at.
It was a recommendation.
I, I think Stephanie's, I think Stephanie's correct on that one.
Headed around and around, and so many side conversations of this. Do we want to take a position on these or not? Like, you know, it sounds, and it, I think that we're okay, and are you okay with that then, with?
Yeah, no, I, I'm just saying that you said we've never voted on all of them, but we did in the spring. We did. We voted.
I think she's right. I think she's right. I think you, you took them as a block, and you recommended them all, but you pulled that.
Recommended them all, and then pulled that one out.
And, and it said, are there any ones you want to pull out, and that was the one, was the capital R.
So, let's just do that. Let's just do that.
Matter of fact, it was Christina the product, that was the one article.
I would like to just do that, because I just, I want to move forward. I want to make a decision.
You go back and watch.
Next time.
Yeah. That, that, that's what I mean. Let's just, let's just make sure we do it right all the time.
Right.
You know, I, I mean, I wasn't trying to be confrontational, but you said we never have, but we did.
No, but Steph, there is, there is no necessarily right way. Like, we can, the chair can decide how we do it each year, yeah.
That's right. You have discretion. You have discretion.
It depended on the chair over the last few years.
Right, exactly. So it hasn't, in my experience too, it's never been really the same way year over year either.
Yeah.
So I think that's where.
Which kind of, like, I, I don't know, is that technically in writing, the chair's, part of the chair's job? To me, that, regardless of who's the, who's the chair, either the board does it a certain way, or they don't, you know. I, I think it should be consistent. It shouldn't matter who, who the chair is from year to year. You know, I just think it's better for us to be consistent. That, that, that's all.
All right. So I think we have our decision. We'll take positions on all the articles next time. We're ready to move to approve the town meeting warrant as amended with the four articles that we talked about. And if you can talk a little bit about the timeline, this will be posted tomorrow on the thirteenth, correct? And it will be available online.
Signs it tonight, it'll be, it'll be posted tomorrow.
And wherever else the constable posts it.
Exactly. Town clerk, we'll give it to the town clerk tomorrow, and then he will give it to the constables, and we'll, and we're off and running.
And it will be on the town manager's page, the board of selectmen's page.
And the news page.
Okay, and the news page. Okay, perfect.
And then the recommendations will be, the AdCom will post them on the, um, website for the reporter? Is that where they'll, they'll be afterwards?
Yeah, it's all, it's part of that schedule under four point one there. I think they're using patch, because I don't know if the reporter's gonna, um.
That's what they do typically, use the patch.
But it will be, the AdCom, um, recommendation will be printed out. That's being facilitated with Christina through the AdCom chair as well.
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
Yes.
Uh, motion to approve the twenty twenty-one November special town meeting warrant as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Hi.
All right, great. All right, Assistant Town Manager's update.
Okay, first I want to talk to you about some recruitments. Um, we have seven that have been in works. Uh, the town clerk's office, um, an administrative assistant has been advertised and hired. Lori Tinti is the new, uh, admin assistant in the town clerk's office. Uh, the other six are all in work, and I'll just list those. Um, so Elaine Repoff has been for many years the department administrator over at the Council on Aging and Human Services. She is retiring the end of this month, so we have that currently advertised. Uh, Veterans Services, the administrative assistant there has taken, um, a new job, um, in line with her degree work, as we have that advertised. The, um, uh, Betsy Buckland, um, after, after many years of working both at the school department and the town, um, has, is retiring from the library. So the senior library assistant, uh, for the youth department there, um, is advertised. And also, we are about to advertise the department administrator job at the fire department, because Nancy Bach has just retired. And as discussed earlier, we still have two openings at the police department that, uh, that we are recruiting for. Um, I just want to let, um, let the board know that I did spend last Saturday through Tuesday out in Portland, Oregon, at the ICMA conference. And, um, and that's a conference that, uh, that Bill usually attends. It, it has, um, some networking, a lot of coursework, um, and he thought it was appropriate that I go and, and continue my coursework there. Um, I'll give you a sampling of some of the courses that I was able to participate in. Um, and these are just buckets, because I actually took fifteen courses while there. Um, uh, one of them was called CEO, where it talked about every employee is expected to be a chief experience officer. Um, I took a couple of courses on performance management, um, two on police work. Um, one was on working with residents to build a stronger, um, uh, police force, and the other one was actually a presentation by retired Chief Carmen Best, um, who retired from, uh, Cincinnati. And she gave a phenomenal presentation. And I will say, the things that I learned from both of those, the one course and the one presentation, was that we are doing pretty darn good here in Foxborough, under, under the leadership of our, um, of our police chief and, and his command staff. Uh, the other courses that I was involved in were, um, engaging conflict deliberately, and, uh, the future of work, how things have changed with, uh, with virtual work through COVID, and how we, how we look at that. Um, I took a couple of courses on branding our town, which were very helpful. Um, and I'll be talking with the EDC about that. Um, I took one course and then another course that touched on ARPA, and found out that they know, um, no more out there, uh, or nationwide than we know at this point. Uh, the, the presentations that Bill has been giving us are right up to speed with what anyone knows. And then I took two courses on workplace culture. Um, and I, and I guess I, I caught something that Chief Grace mentioned, his, his quote of treat employees like people. And that was kind of the underlying theme of, of these two courses. And, um, I think we're doing a, a good job there, and there's always room for improvement, of course. Um, so I just want to report on that, that, um, out of those fifteen courses, seven of them were for credit towards my, uh, ICMA credentialing. So, um, thank you, Bill, for allowing me the opportunity to attend that. It was, it was really valuable to me as a professional, uh, but also I think, uh, I've brought back, um, experience and, and knowledge that I think will help the town. So, um, that's all I have, unless there are any questions for me.
Thank, Phil, your update?
Okay, thank you. So, um, so the, the, the trash working group that I've been, I've established, uh, in the town is, is gonna be meeting for its first time on October nineteenth, and it's gonna be a virtual meeting. So, uh, we're meeting, I believe, at, uh, five thirty, if I'm not mistaken, that evening.
And Steph's on that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, so you're, you're aware of that too, Steph, that, that's, okay, we're set for that. Um, I just wanted to, uh, also give an update. Uh, Katie's been working on this directly, and, um, she is at the point where they're ready to go live with the new, uh, People GIS, um, by the end of this week, which will, the new licensing platform that she's been working on. And that is, uh, consistent with the, with the licensing system that we've been using, and permitting system we've been using in, in, um, in border health, as well as in the, in the, in the, uh, in the building department. And so we'll be tied in together now, so that all those things will be, uh, licensed together, so there'll be a, a good consistency of, of information being flowing in all directions. So we, we're hoping to have that up and running by the end of this weekend. So I know that, um, that Katie's been working really hard and trying to get this done, and so I appreciate the effort she's put into that. And, um, we're, this has been a long time coming, so I appreciate.
And just give us a couple of examples, so that's like, you, like, the J.C.'s using the common?
Sure. So the J.C.'s using the common, it would be, it'd be anything from, any, any one of our licensing dealing with, uh, alcohol licensing, uh, that all gets tied together. Um, and, uh, we do, you know, obviously parking lot licenses, and, you know, any kind of, um, uh, motor vehicle licensing, that all gets tied into that same system. And so now, when it, when she brings up the system, it's all linked back to, uh, the building department, the health department, and then, uh, ultimately, fire department and, uh, police as well. So we'll be, you know, with, there, those are the two remaining links that we're still working on right now.
And do we have any kind of, like, proactive campaign to get out to, like, the parking lot owners, or, you know, maybe like the J.C.'s, or the Lions Group, or the, the groups that use these more often, just to let them know, you know, don't waste your time with like a paper application? Those will come down, I assume?
Yeah, Katie's, Katie's working on that piece of it now, the transition, and she's been notifying them as she goes along that we're moving in a new direction. So they're, they're actually, most of them are fully aware of the, of the change we're gonna make.
So she's, she's actually, um, uh, rolling that out slowly. She's, so she's piloting some, so she's, she's on here now, and she could talk to this more, but she has reached out selectively to some folks, um, representing each of the different licensing and permitting. So that if there are any, you, you know, with the new software rollout, if there are any, uh, issues, it hits, you know, one of each style.
Okay, awesome.
And not, you know, two hundred and fifty.
Right.
Right.
And, and Katie, I don't know if you have more to say on that?
Yep, no, everything was perfect. Um, we're just gonna wait to test with a few people before we go out, um, and market to everyone, um, or not really market, but really let everyone know that it will be online. That will be through, um, email, software, through People GIS, um, and, and email will go out for myself as well, just to answer any questions and be available for, um, licensing and especially for renewals at the end of the year.
And what will it look like on, on our end for the board? Like, will something be printed out, or will we go into an online system, or how will it?
Nothing for the board. Everything will be presented just how it has been, um, in the past, um, in terms of, I'll show you how much revenue is generated for a license. Um, the, the list of renewals will all look the same. It'll just be a click of a button, hopefully, um, instead of me keeping a manual Excel, um, and updating it as the changes are made throughout the year.
So it's a, it's a much more efficient system than what we've been using.
Big time save.
Yeah, big time save.
Okay, great. Good luck with that. Let us know if we can help at all, get the word out or anything.
Thank you.
Um, an update on the Walnut Street request for proposals. Those requests proposal for the Walnut Street proposal for the affordable housing, for the, for the, uh, through the Housing Authority, is out right now, and I do back, remind me again, is it November eighteenth? That's what I thought.
November eighteenth.
November eighteenth, so, uh, eleven AM. So I, I wanted to just make sure everybody's aware of that, if anybody's, we've had, we had our first site visit the other day, and there were about six contractors who expressed interest and did the sidewalk, so that was good to see that. Uh, some unfortunate news, though, we did see, receive today that the, uh, the state did not fund our request for, uh, for assistance on the light as well as the sewer. We do have funding from the federal government, but we don't have any from, from the state yet. So we're gonna continue to pursue that. This is, it didn't come through in this first round. Um, typically, they don't in the first round. You have to go a couple of rounds before you can get it. And, uh, but we are gonna go back and then look and talk to the communities that did get them, or see what their applications, what, what ours was lacking, to see what we can try and do different. And, uh, we'll do a follow-up on that. And, uh, I know we're a little disappointed to see that, but by the same token, we're not, we weren't totally shocked by it either. So, uh, but then again, we still, we still would like to get that figured out. Um, the financial summit is again tomorrow night at, at, starting at six PM. Uh, it will be televised, and, uh, it will be a meeting that will last, uh, upwards of ninety minutes. Uh, we're gonna try and cut it off by seven thirty. So we'll, uh, we'll try and, uh, get through the points as quickly as we can, and then save enough time for questions at the end. Um, anyone, uh, this meeting will be a virtual meeting for the public in general, but they, but the three boards will be present in the room. And then, uh, questions can be filtered through to Christina, um, through, uh, via, through Zoom, uh, and, uh, and, and online, so we shall be able to take questions, uh, from the public, uh, through that effort as well.
And in advance, so people can send questions in advance?
Right.
And they can watch on cable access as well.
Exactly.
To the BOS@foxboroughma.gov Gmail, email address.
Email, right. All right. Um, and then last but not least, I did receive a concern, um, this past weekend about some work that was being done to dig up a time capsule at the Powder House, uh, right behind us. Um, not so much, this is not, not trying to do what is known as a no good deed goes unpunished type of thing, but it just is one of these situations where, uh, we had no knowledge of that. And that the fact that, that this was being dug, even though it's a shovel dig, there's a process we still have to go through through DigSafe and, and different organizations that when we dig into the ground, because you never know what's under the ground there. And so we have to go through that process. And anyone who actually did that was doing it, assuming so, on town property. And as such, that should be, uh, really be refrained from doing, and, and, and just least check with us first. We would have given the proper guidance on how that would have been done, but it was done unbeknownst to us. And so, uh, in, in the future, uh, anyone who's listening, and we'll try to reach out to the folks in the neighborhood to let them know, we're not opposed to the, to the effort. We just want to make sure it's done properly. And there's a liability issue for the town as well, in situations like that, so we want to make sure that we cover those things.
And in fairness to the neighbors, they did come in front of us.
They did.
For the block party application, and they did talk about a time capsule.
But we didn't know, I didn't.
I just, I guess, at least, I guess we didn't know.
It wasn't clear as to where it was, yeah.
Yeah, we didn't know if it was in someone's backyard or out here, but they did, yeah.
The block party was fine. There was no issue with the block party, but it was the issue was that.
They did mention the time capsule too, I think.
Yeah, so.
I remember, they're bringing some old neighbors in, they said, to, to open it up.
And we're glad it was, it was a nice event. There's no issue about that. It's just the fact that if it happens on town property, we need to know about it at that time.
And additionally, where it's on historical site, that should have gone in front of the historical commission, I think.
Right. So I, those are, those are pieces that were left out. I don't, I don't think they were done on purpose. It was just, uh, an oversight. So we want to make sure that, that folks are aware of that going forward. Okay? Um, I think that's all I have.
All right. Anything from the board before we, I just have a couple items here to go through, just reminders really. Seth, you had one item you wanted to bring up. I don't know if you want to talk about it. We'll have it on a future agenda, but just to kind of tee up, the select board that, you know, you and I talked about too.
Oh, yeah. Um, it's something I, I don't know, I thought about it last week. Um, just using a, having a gender-specific board name, kind of funny in this day and age. Select man, select whatever, person, whatever. So just thinking about getting with the times, using a gender-neutral, um, name for the board, so.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll put that on the next agenda, and then that would have to go to town meeting, but, um, you know, I have noticed, like, when we're on things through, um, you know, trainings and stuff, most are, like, most of what I read in the paper, you know, are a select board.
It's become more neutral over time.
Yeah, so.
It was the presentation that we saw last week, where it actually referenced this board as a select board.
Right, people almost assume, yeah.
That makes sense. That looks right. Um, so.
So we had chair training, I think that was what, last Thursday night?
Yeah.
And Seth and I just kind of quickly talked about it in the parking lot after, so we didn't have time to make this, which is something we wanted to tee up. Um, and then there's a number of Halloween events coming up. I don't want to miss anything, but for town ones, there's the Halloween parade, the pumpkin float, Boyd and Library has trick or treat. I know a couple of the local churches have events going on. There's a lot, a lot of Halloween events going on, which is exciting that they can, you know, be safely done outside. And then I don't think anyone has missed the, um, the, the common electrical work, um, up on the center, which it sounds like the J.C.'s craft fair went okay.
I had a patient come in and said, so when did the town allow a World War One reenactment? On the common.
It is pretty significant, didn't it?
Oh, those are huge, uh.
But, uh, but the good news is that we're making progress, and that, uh, a lot of the underground conduit for the, that's for a new electrical system and new lighting, uh, which has all been, you know, run through the historical commission and the town historian, and we're all very pleased about it, but it's, it just, it makes a mess, uh, when you do that. So, but this is to being done the right way, and I'm really grateful that we're getting, making the good progress on it.
How long will we be, uh, digging up there?
So we should be done by the end of the month. Um, so hopefully, that'll be all sorted out. And we have all the equip, all the poles, we have all the, um, and, uh, we're hoping to have the thing up and running this year, so.
And, um, Schneider did donate, I think, two hundred and fifty thousand for that, so I.
Hundred, hundred fifty thousand.
Hundred fifty thousand. Hundred fifty thousand, sorry. So a most chunk of that, you know, came from that donation, so thank you to them as well.
No question. And then we did have an additional $50,000 or $60,000 that was given by town meeting towards that effort as well. So it's about a $200,000 project. Those things aren't cheap, those lights aren't cheap, but they're very, but they're going to be complete LEDs and they look a lot like, they have a nice antique look to them. I think people will be very pleased with them when we see them up and running. It'll be five more lighting to the commons, so they make it even safer at night.
Great. Anything else from anyone else on the board? No? Okay. All right, so we have a number of action items to run through. Go ahead and get started with those.
So just kick it right off at the motion?
Yeah, I think, I just want to talk about the Erica Spitz one, so if you want to make the motion, then we can go into discussion.
Motion to appoint Erica Spitz to the Foxborough Cultural Council.
Second.
All right, under discussion, so there isn't a date on there and I think we should have some kind of date?
So this one in particular, they are, they are, they're working right now to determine their different, their actual dates of, how long they're going to serve for.
Right.
So that hasn't been clarified for us yet. So I think the date that we would plug in, what was the, what's the current date they're using, or is there one?
They're all over the place, summer of the fall, summer of May. But we could even do 30 days and we'll know by then, but I think we should put some kind of date on there, because I've never seen us appoint someone open-ended without a date.
So I think, the other, the other way to do it is to, is to do it through, what is it, the other one's a May 31st, right, or May 30?
Yeah, just one due through May 31st.
Go through May 31st and then you can always amend it later.
Twenty-two, okay, so, so we have an amendment to that adding the May 31st, 2022 date. We had a motion, second. All right, so I think we're ready for a vote as an amendment.
Yeah, just a quick question, not that it's, I mean, I know Erica, she's wonderful.
Yeah.
But is there a reason why they didn't come before us? I know a lot of times for appointments we might hear, like I know Erica, so I don't have any qualms about it or anything.
Yeah, no, we, like when we just appointed someone to the personnel board, the board has vetted them out and we've just been taking them as action. We did offer her the opportunity if they want to come in.
Yep, okay.
They can, but, you know, everyone's got different preferences.
Yep.
I think they might actually be meeting right now, so she does have to go get sworn in quickly too, if they're going to be acting on anything. So just remind her about that policy.
I think she was my son's teacher.
Yeah, she was a teacher at the Ag or is a teacher, yeah.
She was.
Yeah, so.
She's great.
She is great. So I'd love to see new names added to these boards and committees. So all those in favor as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
And just know we may see that one come back up soon if the date is changed.
Ready?
Yep.
Motion to approve the request from Renaissance Hotel and Hilton Garden Inn at Patriot Place to extend food and alcohol service to begin at 10:00 a.m. on October 24th, November 14th and 28th and December 26th, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Do we, do we allow the alcohol at 10?
Yeah, we don't, we won't do it any earlier than 10, we had.
Oh, I thought it was 11, okay. Just, 10's an hour, okay.
10's what we decide, yep, okay. All right, so all those in favor?
Right.
And we did make sure none of them are night games or afternoon games too, so.
Yeah, they're all one o'clock, right?
Yep, yep.
Motion to approve the request from Better Food Foxborough Doing Business as Citizen Crust to extend food and alcohol service to begin at 10:00 a.m. on October 24th, November 24th and 28th and December 26th, 2021.
Second.
I think you just said 24th and I have the 14th of November, on that November date.
Want to read it again?
No, I think we're good, just as amended to the 24th, yep.
Oh, amended, yeah.
All right, so we second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, this is the Foxborough Commission on Disability, we saw this one come up recently and we just removed some redundant language that was accounted for in the handbook, so I think we're ready to approve that one.
Motion to approve the updated rules and regulations of the Foxborough Commission on Disability.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept donation of $250 from the Craft Group for the cemetery fund.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eight point six, I think we're.
Motion to accept donation of $250 from the Craft Group as a Founder's Day donation.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? And I do think they are looking for more volunteers for the Founder's Day committee too. I saw, I think only seven people showed up, so just a little plug for that that I saw online.
But I'm sure, there's just also another one I didn't get a chance to tell Mr. Keegan, there's an additional $50 donation from Dave and Marie Crimmens in memory of Dan Hartnett for the cemetery fund to the Historical Commission as well.
Thank you. All right, the next one, eight point seven.
Motion to approve the updated town of Foxborough financial policies.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
So, yeah, so this is something that, is everyone else ready to approve this or?
Yeah, this came before us a while ago and then I think we kicked it back to go out to all the boards.
Mm-hmm.
So to go to school committee, advisory committee, water sewer, which Mr. Stanton, I believe, are you here for this one, just so that I?
I'm just here to spy on you.
Okay. You do that from the comfort of your home. So it's.
In case any questions, Bill and I have talked.
Okay, all right, so yeah, so it's Board of Water and Sewer, School Committee, Advisory Committee, Board of Selectmen and the Financial Management, which is Town Manager, Finance Director, Director of Accounting, Treasurer, Superintendent. So this had come before us a while ago, we had asked all those boards to review it before it came back to us. We wanted to give them, you know, the option to discuss it, have any input. And then I think it's back with us now for this, this final approval that all the signatures will go to paper.
Yeah.
And that happened, right?
Not really.
Well, you still, you have a question still, Mike?
Yeah, at this point, the Water and Sewer Commission is, cannot in good conscience sign it. There's a couple of things we would like to.
Could you please come up to the microphone? I apologize.
Hi, Mike Stanton, Chairman of the Water and Sewer Commission. Now, we'd, we'd only looked at this informally and we had some brief discussions, we have not voted on it. But there's a couple of things we wanted to work through with Bill. One of them is the stipulated sum for road work in the future. Would like to see a little more historical context in that. OPEB was passed at town meeting after two failures to be applied to OPEB and roads. I think there were, we were in some interesting times, I think some of the genesis for this was that there was a concern that we weren't funding at the Ark last year. I know I'd received, I get backchanneled on it and I was very accepting of Bill's answers, which was, we don't know where we're going with this, we can't make that commitment until we know. And that it will be funded and we will catch up. And I guess the other thing we're looking at is that, not to wish anyone ill, but if the town is on a funding schedule to fully fund this liability by at least the year 2038, probably most of us will be off in retirement. And we would like to have the people there see something chiseled in granite that we understand that reasonable people agreed early on that given the enormity of our unfunded liability through OPEB deserved overweight to do the funding. And as you saw, we had a hiccup with this actuarial tables change. And that when the time comes when it's weighted towards roads, that it does in fact go to roads. That doesn't mean that you eliminate the need for OPEB in the future, again, given, anything can happen, as we've learned very well here the last couple of years. So that's where we're going, those are our thoughts, would really like to have it memorialized better in the document.
Have you seen the Public Works, new Public Works section? Because it actually addresses that very point.
Well, it does, and I'll tell you, the.
There were two changes, the one is in the OPEB side and the other one's on the, on the Public Works side.
Well, I, it's the Public Works side, unless another revision came out that I didn't get in this one I have, Bill.
It shows, yeah, it's right there.
Date of June 2021.
That's the one.
Yeah.
So it says in that paragraph, which wasn't as clear in the previous version, that there was a commitment up, that it shall be at least a million dollars.
It doesn't fly, I'll tell you why. We're about to go into some pretty tough financial times where we're going to get hit with a lot of inflation. Inflation is great to pay off an OPEB debt with cheaper dollars. It's absolutely devastating for infrastructure. A dollar in the year 2020 is worth 63 cents today. So stipulated sum is a non-starter. And I think it leads to shenanigans down the road. So again, I'd like to see some language that talks about how it was weighted towards OPEB in the beginning and then that funding vehicle catches up in the day mercifully, we fully fund it, that those monies do go to roads. And as we all know, there's never enough money for roads. We're going to get hit with all this MS4s and everything else. So that's where we're coming from, just so everybody knows. I mean, and that's why at this point in time, we can't in good conscience sign this particular draft of it and I know we've kind of spent a little time on it, but we'll just have to roll up our sleeves and get to it.
So I'm not quite sure how else you would do it, because it says, it says, it's the stated goal to fund these improvements at no less than a million dollars per year. So the question then becomes, how else would you state it? So I think.
Well, that we will work on. And I'm not here to, I don't have a submission to give you.
Okay.
But I just want to say, you know, this is our, you know, it was one of those things of, you know, here it is, no one met a lot over the summer, you come down and say, you know, here we are. I think it's, this is super important that we get this right going forward, if only for government credibility in the community. So, we'll work on it.
So basically, so once the OPEB is funded, you guys just want something that says that this money's going to roads?
Correct.
Because that's how.
It's still clear, yes. Like I say, chiseled in granite.
Yep.
There's no ambiguity.
You're 16 years away from there, so a lot of things could happen between now and 16 years from now. So I mean, we could have.
We understand that. And I think I prefaced it by, reasonable people have worked, understanding that when this first came in, what do we have, a $40 million unfunded liability with the OPEB?
$60 million, $60 million.
Bill, there's a history lesson here that, I know it's lit, but many years ago, I had a meeting with Kevin Pecos and Randy Skalins and they informed me that the, all the cities and towns in the Commonwealth had been advised by the legislature that there would be no more money or additional monies coming out on the cherry sheet. They would though, give all the communities in the Commonwealth the opportunity to implement a local meals tax. The meals tax was brought up at two separate town meetings.
Mm-hmm.
It, well, three. It failed the first two because the perception was that this was just something more to feed government for the government's sake and it didn't. And then I believe it was Larry Harrington, who was a selectman at the time and said, no, if we do this, we promise the money's going to go to pay down this unfunded liability with OPEB and roads. That was it, two items. It wasn't 50/50, but it's worked well so far, right there, I mean, doing terrific working down the OPEB. I think now, actually like I say, with the run-up in inflation, it's going to be more accelerated, it's been, man, it's great, there's been marked improvement on the, some of the roads. I know Roger used some pretty good techniques to extend the life of some roads. We have a pretty decent score, but there's, there's never enough money with everything. And like I say, with MS4 sidewalks and then if you want to talk about what are roads, this community has adopted a complete streets approach. So that's the sidewalks, the handicap ramps, the drainage, curbing, and I mean, I can tell you from where I am, we are in water sewer, I mean, the prices of stuff will take your breath away.
Mm-hmm.
And everything's oil, 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 and that's going through the roof.
City looks better.
So again, so that's really, the stipulated sum is a non-starter. I think that we can put our heads together and come up with something that gives the intent for future leaders of the town to be guided by.
I'm all ears.
Okay? So that's it, that's my two cents.
And I think that's why we wanted the boards to look at it. And just one second, Doc, did school committee, AdCom, everyone else?
Everybody else is fine with it.
Is good with the document.
But, you know, Mike's.
We're closer to it than.
Mike makes a fair point, I get it, because, you know, there's, I think every community should prioritize its roads and infrastructure, because it's the stuff that you, that you don't see above the ground.
Right.
That will kill you.
It's, well, remember one, it's not, it's unglamorous.
Yeah.
And two, it's one thing that everybody shares.
Right.
Yeah.
Absolutely, there would probably be no resident that, you know, that line up here and say, my street needs this and my street needs this. I mean, I get it and I understand the concern because as we're getting close to funding, somebody might say, hey, well, this is a good project, why don't we, why don't we put some of that money towards something? So I get it.
It's really, it's a continuity of the pledge that was made to the citizens of the town and it's just the.
I think the community's going to have some really interesting.
The government's responsibility to honor that.
I think the community's going to have some really interesting decisions to make in the next several years, because you got, your pension, pension's going to be paid off as well as your OPEB. So those are two big long-term liabilities. The pension liability doesn't really address there per se, but I will say that both of those are in around the 2030, 32 mark. The OPEB liabilities can actually come down.
In 2032, you may be looking down on the, I don't know, I'm in my periscope.
Yeah, that's. I'll be barely looking down, but.
So any, can we, we will make a commitment to work on.
Yeah, let's just try to do it.
We'll figure it out.
We want to have it done by town meeting, well before that, I think.
Yeah, we can figure it out.
Sorry, Mike.
I guess my thought was, what was your thought, Seth? About the whole process?
So my, my thought is that as a member of the primary policy board in town, I want to spend more time with this. I guess it's been all reviewed and everything before my time, but the last thing I want to be is a rubber stamp or something that I haven't spent enough time going through and reviewing. So I want to be an active participant as long as I'm sitting on the board. I can abstain if that's what you guys want to really.
No, it sounds like we have more time now, they've got a little work to do, dig into it more.
It's too important.
I think so, I agree.
Just, just so you know.
Worked out so well for the town.
It has, the policy's really a good policy, but, but the only two changes were the Public Works and the OPEB. So this policy that you have has been a longstanding policy for many years.
It's the underlying.
It's the, it's the bold.
There's only two, there's only two, two pieces of bold print in it.
Yeah.
And that's really where the focus is and the bonding companies love it.
Right, they do.
Sounds like you have time and you guys, if you can just, you know, maybe get together next week and.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, this is, again, this is super important to us and again, as Water and Sewer guys, we, you know, we work with the DPW, I mean, there's no sense paving the road and we come in and start ripping it up.
Man, that makes no sense to do.
We all have ego on our face, so.
Okay.
It's been a great integrated process and we want to continue it and that's it.
All right, great, more to come on that, so we'll, we'll take no action on that one tonight and let you gentlemen.
Fair enough.
We'll figure it out.
Seth, we'll get to Bill and we'll get a couple, we'll sit down and we'll hammer it out, get something that.
That makes sense.
Is easy to read.
Yep.
And no ambiguity. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful evening.
Yeah, you too.
Halloween.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, so we have one more.
Good to see you, thanks, Mike.
Motion to approve the September 14th, 2021 Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Under discussion, I just saw one thing, right, as I was sitting here, on the last, that block party one, at one point it says Joanne Drive and just correct that to Joanna. But otherwise, that was the only thing. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and just a last plug about our, I know we mentioned it tonight, but in case anyone's still with us, the budget summit and the planning public hearing this week.
13th and 14th respectively.
Busy week.
Yeah, busy week.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.